Good evening, everyone. Please rise to the place of allegiance.
Pleasantly, please.
To apply of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for the update. Let's roll.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin. Uh, Councilmember Larson. And Councilmember Witten.
Here. Uh, Mr. -- Councilmember Justin has just walked in.
And Larson will be here in fifteen minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen minutes.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Vicky, first reading, please.
Notice to taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations. Notice hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet the Porter County Government Administration Building at one fifty-five Indiana Avenue, Val Berizzo, on November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, at five thirty PM to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budgets for the year two thousand eighteen and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General Fund, Circuit Court, thirty-one ninety family house, fifty-eight hundred. EMA, forty-five forty other equipment, ten thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, twenty-three cents. Jail, forty-five forty other equipment, thirty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Local Income Tax Fund, twelve four-ten longevity, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Twelve one hundred FICA, ten thousand, and twelve thirty HERF, fifteen thousand. Tax Sale Fees Fund, one twelve oh three contractual services, forty thousand dollars. Wildlife Management Donations Fund, forty-one oh six. Hourly, one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Office Supplies, ten dollars. Gas, Fuel, and Lubrication, thirty. Printing Other Than Office Supplies, three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. Advertising, two eighty. Equipment Other Than Vehicles, one hundred. Other Rentals, one thousand five hundred and seventy-one. Contractual Services, six hundred and fifty. And Events Expenses, one thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Prosecutor IPAC Grant Fund, eighty-one fourteen. Data Processing Equipment, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Other Equipment, four thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Court Interpreter Grant Fund, ninety-one oh eight. Interpreter, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Taxpayers appearing in fifteen shall have a right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within fifteen days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken. Signed, Vicki Urbannick. Auditor reported apparently in publication November sixteenth in the Chester Tribune.
Thank you, Ms. Vicky. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion next thing on the agenda that was to approve the additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand longevity, ten thousand FICA, fifteen thousand HERF. Along with that, my motion would include the approval of the transfers, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, and twenty thousand for jail medical. All right, we have a first and we have a second covering both. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Vicky.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the General Fund for the Commissioners.
Make a motion to approve both transfers.
Second.
Okay. We've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments?
Does that include the one, Form 144?
Yes. So both transfers and?
Both transfers, 144.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
Are we, uh, suggesting by this that the, the change in inspector judge and clerk pay would go to that going forward or just be retroactive?
It's, it's retroactive. It's to this year.
Yeah. It's for this year to pay the poll workers double for all their time and effort.
This year only. Right. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
So do we have all the information to pay them?
Um, auditors, that information been forced to come?
I think you said you had it all except for maybe you, you, Vicki, when we talked earlier, you indicated that you had just about all the information you need with the exception of maybe one or two, that you'll be able to get the pay out earlier than usual.
Yes. Um, when the Commissioners fixed the special rate earlier today, I announced that we were able to get all the poll workers for whom we have information scheduled to be paid with the next county pay, which is this coming Friday. And that's the earliest pay we could possibly have paid the poll workers.
When you say all their information, the people that you have information on, if somebody in the public doesn't get a paycheck, should they contact you? Who do they contact at that point?
Uh, yes.
Clerk?
Uh, what we're going to do is we have about fifty people whom we don't have the payroll forms.
Oh, you have that many.
We're trying to track them down through the clerk's office. If we can't find, if, if we don't receive them, um, the plan is that the auditor's office is just going to send them the form asking them to return it directly to us. Just expedited so that they're on the next page.
So are.
But they'll still get the meal reimbursement as long as we have their addresses.
Well, you've been putting a real time crunching to make that possible for this Friday.
Yes.
Hats off to you. Thank you.
And last week was Thanksgiving and my staff did not work over Thanksgiving, so the staff really, really crunched it and worked very well.
Obviously. Thank you.
And the 144 takes.
Even though this is only for this year, there's a resolution that we're looking forward to getting together with you guys and the clerks and raising the pay into the future as well.
Yeah, we've suggested in the past about that. Yeah, we've talked about raising the pay anyway. Um, and, you know, having witnessed the election, uh, this year and what, what the poll workers went through, uh, it certainly needed to be raised, so.
We'll open it up later.
Yeah, we'll open it up at the floor at the end.
Yeah, so it's, the 144 is a hundred and thirty-five, going from one thirty-five to two seventy, two hundred and seventy dollars for inspectors, one ten to two twenty for judges, one ten to two twenty for clerks. So it's doubling it. Appreciate the Commissioners getting that done also. And Vicki.
And Vicki, absolutely.
So.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I may want to just say here that I was a judge in this last election, so I am going to, um, you know, not count, because I'm paying, I'm earning my own money.
Well, now that I know you're getting it, I was getting it now. Hey, anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's see, this will be, roll call, please, yeah.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham. At the same. Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Five affirmative votes.
All right, thank you.
I approve the transfer of one hundred and ninety thousand for the CCD Fund.
The power line.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second on the transfer of a hundred and ninety thousand. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the additionals on the Wildlife Management Donations.
We've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Vicky.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Okay, next, uh, we've got Superior Court Judge Bradford.
I'll make a motion to approve the seventy-seven, ninety-six cents.
Second. Okay, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Next to Judge Harper's Court.
I'll, uh, make a motion on the additional and the transfers.
Second.
Judge Harper's Court.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? How you doing, Ms. Vicky? All good, thank you.
Hi, Harold.
Hi, Judge, how are you?
Good. Do you have any questions on the five thousand eight hundred dollars we need to pay the family house?
I think I'm good.
Anyone else question?
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Yeah, I haven't been back for a while.
Okay, hearing no additional questions or comments. Uh, roll call, please, Vicki.
Uh, Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We've got Judge Clymer's Court.
I'll make a motion on the transfers.
For new standoff machine for court recording.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. To Judge Stewart.
I've got a lot of questions on this. I'll make a motion on the transfer, twenty-five hundred.
Second.
For the new chairs for Judges' Court.
Yeah. Who's coming up for Judge Sinister?
What are you doing with the old chair? New chair!
That wasn't on the original.
We need about five each here.
I didn't really have any questions. Jeremy.
The legs are falling off of them.
Any more questions or comments?
Just wanted to see you get closer.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
That was easy. Tell us all in your presentation.
Thank you.
We're looking at new chairs.
Okay, next on to juvenile detention.
I'll make a motion on the transfers.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second on old transfers. Are there any questions or comments or, or transfers?
Hi.
Hey, how you doing?
You have any questions?
No, it's all pretty straightforward stuff. No one else? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you guys.
Next, we've got the prosecutor, Prosecutor Differral Fund, and this is to pay comp time for overtime payments for the office minutes. Fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars is the request.
Move to approve.
And forty-four cents.
Second.
We've got a first and we've got a second. Are there any questions or comments? How you guys doing?
Fine.
No questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
No.
Could we do roll call? Can I change it?
Do whatever you want.
Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Vicky. That was really confusing, I thought. Understood.
Okay, Councilmember Bozick.
No.
Councilmember Reavis.
No.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
No.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson. I'm sorry, he's not here. And Councilmember Witten.
No.
Four to two, no.
All right, thank you guys. Have a good evening. Next, we have the Treasurer, the Tax Pay Sales Fees Fund. Move to approve.
Second.
We've got a first, we've got a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those, or, excuse me, roll call, please.
Okay, um, Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Next on to Parks and Rec. Looks like they're looking for a transfer for some new moving equipment and/or utility deal.
Walter. How's the light show?
It says moving and/or utility trailer.
All right, we've got a first, we have a second.
I'll second that.
So how is the light show?
Awesome. I mean, it's no Bozick Family Christmas.
It wasn't blown over by the wind.
No, but it's okay.
We'll be out there to see.
Yours not blown over by the wind?
Oh, flood, it is.
Aw.
Dealing with that.
Sorry, didn't know that.
All right, we've got, uh, any other further questions or comments?
Uh, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good day. Next, we've got the Animal Shelter, looking to transfer funds to cover the food costs to the end of the year. How you guys doing, Ms. Vicky?
Good. How are you?
Does anyone have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. First and a second. Any questions or comments?
How we doing over at Shelter? Things going good?
Awesome.
Adopting animals left and right?
Yes, we are.
Awesome.
Danny had a cat. I had two of those.
We have dogs, too.
I had two dogs. One of them's a bull.
I think I've met that one.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, out to Development and Stormwater Management.
I'll make a motion on the five thousand dollar transfer.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Uh, roll call. Wait, no, excuse me. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to EMA.
Good afternoon.
Bella? Yes, she is. Uh, looking for an additional ten thousand two hundred and twenty, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents for FEMA Public Assistance Funds from spring twenty-eighteen.
I'm gonna make a motion on that. If no one has, I was talking to attorney before I made any comments.
Second.
We've got a first and a second.
You know, I didn't want to take that.
I'm gonna start doing that more often from now on.
Any questions or comments? Okay, uh, hearing none. All those in favor, or, no, excuse me, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Zero.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, on to the Sheriffs.
I'm gonna make a motion on the Sheriff's General Fund transfers, the Prosecutor IPAC Grant, and the Edward Bryan DEA transfer.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? The group got bigger. Because your group got bigger.
It took people out of trouble.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments?
Grab him, Jeff.
Uh, excuse me, we do need roll call for the additional, please.
For the IPAC additional.
Yes. And it's covering all the, the, two transfers and the additional.
Okay, Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
I'm not voting no.
Okay. Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Zero.
Okay, next to the Sheriff Jail. First thing is they're looking to purchase OD security and a body scanner with three-year warrant.
I move to...
Do you move for just the additional or the transfers in addition to?
Just the additional for that purpose first, so we can talk about that.
Okay, we've got a first, we have a second.
So the additional and the transfer?
No, he said just the additional, right?
Yes.
Uh, with the transfer below it, because it is, okay.
I'll second that motion. Um, for discussion, I'd like to first of all ask Vicki, I know we talked a little bit about this earlier, and I just want to make sure that I understood it correctly. So roughly thirty-five thousand, three forty is general fund. Can we sustain that?
Yes.
And, good. And the second question was, I know that puts us over what we estimated our end of year would be. If we're gonna be okay with that with the state?
I don't have an answer to that, because we received our preliminary budget order and it included just over two hundred thousand of additional appropriations from July to the end of the year. And this will put us over that, so I don't know how the state's going to view that, if that's going to affect the budget or not. I just don't have the answer. I have a, a, an email in for the state for clarification. But can the general fund sustain this from a cash basis? The answer is yes.
So, all right, so I guess what's, as the auditor, are you okay with us doing it now? Are you suggesting we wait? Are you suggesting we do it now? It doesn't matter?
You've, uh...
I want to hear, now I want to hear the...
Okay.
Typically, when we get the, what, what would happen if the state does go in and want to include the additional appropriations into the budget order, what I will do is ask for an adjustment into our operating balance, which is the amount of levy revenues that we can anticipate to get us through the first part of the year. So instead of going in to cut the general fund budget because we want to include the additional, I'll ask for an adjustment someplace else. And we'll do a revenue analysis.
Yeah, but with that, okay, not so much for this request, but generally speaking. Are we okay then with our carryover sustaining us so we can avoid tax anticipated warrants? I mean, are we, are we still in good shape there?
I believe so. We're suggesting end of the year of about five point two. Don't hold me to that, but they'll be around there.
Okay.
And that won't be enough to carry us over, obviously, but it will give us enough of the flexibility that we, we should avoid tax anticipation warrants, which is what we've avoided for the past, you know, number of years.
Yes, we have, and that saves us a lot of money.
So I, I guess, Dan, I think where you're going is, can this person just wait a couple months? Is that what, you know, maybe into January to get?
Well, I was talking with Edie earlier today. You said you've been working on this, looking at it for like a year. So another month.
Well, the price, but the quote we have is, if you read what we sent you. Yes. It's only good till, um, I know I read it somewhere.
Well, the difference also, I'm using the hundred, you know, to transfer from groceries, because the only reason we have money left from groceries is because our, our, our population will spend down.
January.
And I can't guarantee that I can use that money next year. What I can guarantee is every penny I've spent out of that fund this year, including this, including what will be paid for the rest of this year, the deposit coming in from housing, federal housing and DOC prisoners is more than going to be enough to cover this, including leaving some extra over that will go and absorb in the direct general fund.
Well, it all goes into the general fund.
Right.
So, and I say it that way not to dispute what you're saying, because I agree with what you're saying, but when we ask, and I keep reminding everybody, when we ask the auditor for carryover funds, what's left in the general fund, all that stuff, it includes that. So in the auditor's mind, it's not like separate.
Right. Oh, I, I understand. But the money is still enough to, I think, to cover that.
Well, and that, yeah, but that's, the question was, that was why I asked the question, would the general fund sustain it? So we carried, we've covered that, and the answer's yes. So it's not really such, it's not really a question of will the federal prisoner fund revenue sustain it? It's a question of will the general fund sustain it, since it's going into the general fund, and the answer's yes. So we're good there. My question really centered on, is it, is it problematic for the auditor for us to approve this now, since it pushes us over a little bit what our projected expenditures were going to be for additionals? Or is it better for us to wait till January? Sylvia's question for you was, is there some cost benefit to doing it now? And it sounds like maybe there is. Uh, so now that conjures up my question, how, is it a problem, Vicki? And what is the cost savings if we do it now as opposed to January? They're saying that, um, the cost, the, the price that they gave us is good until January first of two thousand nineteen, so it's gonna go up. We don't know how much, though, at this point? No, I don't know. That was my question.
Plus, plus also, there's an error, the, it's five years warranty, it's two-year manufacturer, and then we, we extended it three more years, so it's five years for the warranty.
So you were right. That's true.
This used anywhere else?
Laporte?
Laporte?
Laporte.
Lake?
Lake, no, no. Laporte, Marion, Monroe, Hendricks, right now.
Have you talked to them?
Oh, I've talked, yeah. There's two of them out there, and we've, it's like, do you like Pepsi or do you like Coke? They're both good, they're both being used.
I don't like Coke.
Yeah, so, but we couldn't, so we went with the one that our jail staff was real comfortable with, because they used both of them, and they liked the one that we're going with, because they're going to be doing it, so. But, I mean, I really can't overestimate or emphasize, it's, it's not the guys that we bring in from our county. I mean, that's a problem.
That's a trade.
But it's, we have so many inmates that come or being transferred from Marion, from all different, DOC, and, and that's, and they, they have the drugs in them, and we, that's one of our biggest concerns. I mean, we have taken weapons from them, we've got, we've taken a hypodermic, you've seen the list, if you read it, it's somewhat graphic.
We're just going through it again.
It's somewhat graphic, but it's definitely.
Probably jumped out at me. I'm not gonna lie to you.
I'm sure they did.
I'm not gonna lie to you. I got my attention.
But it's the things that happen, and it's hard to believe that they happen, but they do. And, and we didn't even talk about the things that are being swallowed that we, we don't know.
I don't think anybody's, honestly, Dave, I don't think anybody's questioning the need for it. I, I think my questions were more centered toward, is our timing safe?
Were we, yeah, were we going to be penalized?
I mean.
I know that.
So my question still remains for the auditor, is our timing safe?
Is the timing?
Is everybody okay doing it now? Is it, what's your recommendation?
It's additional.
What's your recommendation?
From, you know, from a timing standpoint, it's time to do it now. Next year, I will have to say this, if we were to do an additional, say in January, the state in the last few years has taken, has been delayed a certain additional, that started here.
March, April.
And I think, I'm not going to say the state, but I think part of that is called philosophy to open the budget wide, add additional, start of the year.
Good question.
I think that's why the state.
It's been our philosophy, too, so.
Right. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, next we're on to the purchase of medical oxygen. We'll make a motion to approve the $700.
Second.
Yeah, first and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let's see, Karen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good Christmas.
You're rather welcome to come over and.
Walk, try and.
Like to run the annual.
Now that we're reading, it's all right.
Does it show balance?
Just to let everyone know, we're going to do the second reading, the attorney's report, and then we'll open the floor. Ms. Vicky, can you do our second reading, please?
Yes. Whereas it has been determined that now necessary to appropriate more money than less appropriate in the annual budget, therefore be either deemed itself by Florida County Council, Florida County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the tax, you're going to be following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the name. General fund, a total of $51,406.23. Local income tax, a total of $150,000. Tax sale fees fund, $40,000. Wildlife management donations, $9,180. Prosecutor IPAC grant, $8,581.87. And support interpreter grant fund, $787.97.
We're taking through, we're taking through all or something.
No.
A real proposal. Is that it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve second reading. We got a first and we got a second. Second. Ms. Vicky, roll call, please. Or any questions or comments, I'm sorry. Hearing none, Ms. Vicky, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Motion, Karen, thank you. Attorney's report, Mr. Harper. Attorney Harper.
The only new information to report is just that we're working on the public access to public records request, and we plan on making a preliminary response tomorrow. And I know Scott's been in touch with IT about the time requirements for that in terms of searching those emails, but you'll be receiving something from Mayor Scott next week, probably 24 hours, so. Other than that, there's nothing new to report.
Thank you, Mr. Harper.
Any other fun stuff you want to talk about today, or no? Not really.
Not just yet. So next we're going to move on to any other matter that may possibly become before the council. The first thing we're going to do is actually tackle the salary ordinance that we have before us. After that, we'll open the floor, and you guys have a few minutes to talk if you want to. We just ask that you guys come down here, identify yourself, your first and last name, and where you live, but we'll be right back to that. Okay, so what do we need to do with the salary ordinance? Do we need a motion? We do, and I just have a question, I think maybe just collectively, we've thought about it, but maybe we want to leave it the way it is, but I haven't heard from the commissioners definitively what their intention with voters' registration is, nor have I heard from the new clerk just yet as to what the plan of attack with the election next year is going to be. Right now, we have voters' registration funded as if they're running the election. I don't know what else we can do, other than if and when that changes, we may need to revisit the salary ordinance to adjust that, because I'm not paying someone to do something they're not doing. But on the other hand, we want to pay people for things they are doing. So if, if the new clerk decides to have voters' registration handle elections, then I guess we're right on target, and if not, we need to talk about moving money around.
You don't think now's the time? Probably wait to see.
Well, do you know? No.
We haven't been advised.
No. Now, has anybody heard anything from the commissioners as to what their intention with voters is, or? I've had some conversations with the new clerk, and I think she's in the process of sort of collecting and gathering and trying to get information together as to how she would envision the election coming up. We all know that whatever the case is, we have to move relatively quick, because we can't have the nonsense that happened this year and that turned the corners fast, because it's election in May. Luckily, it's not a countywide election this coming year, it'll be cities and towns, but, but we have to be ready to make those kind of adjustments to the salary ordinance. So even though I may vote for the salary ordinance in its current form, I want to make it clear that I want to revisit this if, in fact, the, you know, depending on where the election duties fall, unless you want to do it now. I have no problem doing it now, it's up to you guys.
I think that, for clarity, probably doing it now, and if we have to revisit it and make changes.
Right, so we know that in our conversations with the state election board, that there are several possibilities that can come of that. One is that the election board can decide to have the clerk continue doing it, that was a smashing success. We could have the, they could hire election commissioners and handle it themselves, they could put it back to the voters' registration. However, I don't know that voters' registration was willing to do it, since in fact, the letter was sentencing that one of them wasn't, and most counties do not have voters' registration doing it. In fact, all but about six, five, don't have them doing it. So, you know, I think we do need to find out what the clerk's going to do. If, in fact, the clerk, the new clerk is going to accept the mantle of handling the election, then my suggestion would be that it's done with certain caveats. One would be that there's an election division within the clerk's office, fully staffed, fully trained, and answerable to the clerk, with some reporting requirements to both commissioners and council, such as poll workers, names, locations, and training. Might be good. But I'm not quite sure where, where the clerk is on that, so. So we could pass it in its current form and revisit it?
I don't think there's any problem with passing it, and then, I mean, the whole issue obviously has to be revisited. There was some talk of having a committee or commission of perhaps council members, commissioners, election board people, and voters' registration, and even have, you know, some recent poll workers involved in that discussion to say, you know, what, what do we need to do, or what can we do going forward to make sure that we minimize the risk or eliminate the risk, you know, for having the disaster that we had this past election? So I don't know if there's been any movement or discussion on getting that group together, but the sooner that happens, the better, especially when we're talking about potentially having new voter, voter equipment and so forth.
Right.
So I would say passing this is not a problem. I would say further emphasizing the importance to the, to the commissioner's office, as well as the election board and everybody else involved, that we need to get a task force or somebody together to start talking about how we repair the damage and make sure we move forward in a positive direction.
I would agree.
I can see where you're coming from, Dan, though, because you're saying, if it is going to change, you don't want to be funding a voter registration that.
Isn't running the election.
That isn't going to be active.
So we pass this, and then?
Yeah, we could revisit it later, when we, when it's figured out exactly how we're in a, how we're going to move forward. Right? There's no problem with that.
Aren't you still paying them at that point? Because you're paying them this extra money to run.
As of January.
Like, I was hoping, during my conversation, I think Jeremy, you've talked to Jessica Bailey as well a little bit, so you want to chime in here, but I think that the emphasis to Jessica was that whatever the plan is, it needs to be a collective effort, and it needs to be in place before the end of the year. That we need to have something in place, that we hit the ground running with the new clerk, January 1st, it's, everyone knows where we're at, things are in place, and we're rolling. I think that's the thought. Correct?
Yeah, and she's, yeah, I've talked to her a few times, and she's aware, I think, you're right, Dan, she's kind of gathering information right now, trying to collect herself, and have to make a decision relatively soon. I think she's aware of that, even before she takes off, she's got to get involved in how this is going to shape out. So in terms of a committee, you know, I'm not sure, Mike, I think it's a good idea of some sort, formal, informal, that all the right players got to get in a room together and see this thing down the right path. So.
If we pull those salaries out, and if they're still allocated, we don't have to approve those salaries for voter registration, do we?
I think we should, because there's been no determinations made, and Mrs. Bailey has her hands full, and.
We're just talking about the dollar amount, I think, is the discussion, is that, because then Dan has a point, that they didn't run the election this year, and they refused to run it up until this point, so unless we revisit their salaries first, before we approve the salary ordinance, we really are approving their pay as they're running, as they're running the election.
That, to my recollection, was the intention, that we raise the salary to that level, so either way, we'll be revisiting, but if at this current time, we're going to start paying somebody that's not doing that, January 1st.
If we, if we take them out, effectively, the salary for those two positions is zero for 2019.
I don't think it's taking them out, I think it's lowering them to.
I thought that was the suggestion.
Is that what?
No, I just thought we'd set it aside. We don't know what we're going to do there.
But January 1st, we still have employees that wouldn't have a salary, then.
Revisit it at the beginning of the year.
What's your suggestion, Vicky? Let's, we, we're, we've got, there's a lot of balls in the air right now, and so the possibility is that there is no VR, that there is a VR that's just doing voters' registration, that there is money needed for an election division in the clerk's office. What's the, what's the easiest and simplest for the auditor?
Nothing easy, no. The salary ordinance is based on the numbers that you approved that bunch of times, so we can only practice payroll if we have a salary in the salary ordinance. So every time you approve a 144, it means you're amending the salary ordinance, up or down, every time you do that. So.
Would it be easiest if we were to pass the salary ordinance in its current form and then amend it later? Or would it be, you know, depending on whether the road leads?
The one good thing is that both voter registration and election board and clerk are all in the general fund, so it's not like we're dipping into.
Right.
If the intent is to pay people in voter registration with the pay period that begins, that actually begins this year at the end of December, and it goes over into January, if the intent is to pay people in voter registration, we need a salary for 2019.
How is it zero? What do you think?
I said pass it as is and revise it when we figure out what we're going to do.
Well, what we're, what you're going to do really doesn't have much to do with this board, except maybe to transfer money into another 144. That decision isn't this board's to make, it's, it's going to be a lot of juggling around, and it sounds like Mrs. Bailey is working diligently and trying to get all this figured out.
I just want to make sure we're not paying someone to run an election that's not.
Well, we don't know that until.
Oh, that's right, and you're absolutely right, Karen. We need to wait and see where those, where those other pieces of the puzzle fall in. And my comments were very specific to if those pieces fall to voters' registration is not running the elections. When we gave these salaries, it was with expressed promise to run the election.
Yes.
So I'm just not going to, that, that, those shenanigans are over.
I don't, I don't think it was.
Hey, does anyone have a motion on the salary ordinance?
I just don't know.
Some moved.
Second. Except as it. And we got a first and second. Any questions or comments? So back to, not to beat a dead horse, but back to Mike's and Jeremy's comments, and mine, I suppose, how quickly can we get, because I don't want this to linger into next year.
It can't.
I don't want January 1 to come, and someone's collecting a paycheck, not doing the job. So how quickly can we get it worked out, do you think, with the clerk elect and the commissioners and the election board? Someone, do you want to, do you want to have a couple of volunteers volunteer to be on the committee? We may have to revisit, you know, in December, I hate to tell you, but, because I'm not, I'm just not going to sit here in January and that, that happen. So we may need to come back in December, if for nothing else, to address this.
That's fine.
So, I mean, do you guys want to form a committee? What you, what you guys need with?
Jeremy?
I think, yeah, I mean, I'll do it, and I'll reach out to Scott, McClure, I, Mike.
Sure.
Mike.
Yes, as soon as, the better.
You should, Scott?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And then maybe get a member or two, yeah, get a commissioner, get, you know, a member from the election board, maybe, although clerk will be that person, I suppose.
Yeah.
So, and then maybe you can let us know, and then we can decide how we want to approach this next month.
Or even this month, yeah?
We're running out of this month.
Well, that's, yeah, I got.
Oh, you're right. This month. Yeah, you said that.
All right. We've got a first and a second on the table. Are there any questions or comments? Anything further? Roll call, please.
As far as the roll call, can I just clarify, you're approving the salary ordinance?
As is.
As is.
I don't want to throw this, but the law does give you until December 31st half of salary ordinance, so if you're committed to be looking at that.
We, we can change it in December, correct? Okay, well, let's move forward with it, and then.
This is the idea that it might be.
It could be a potential change, depending.
Adapting it or amending it.
Would we be amending it or changing a 144?
No, well, the 2019 hasn't begun yet, so I'm not sure.
No, we do have to, because now we have VR.
We'd have to change it. Changing.
I think we should come back.
I was going to say, if, if.
I honestly think we should come back to this. We're up to December 31st, I think we should wait.
Do you want to second?
Did I second it?
I, I seconded. I'll, I'll withdraw with a caveat.
Sorry.
It'll, it'd be a terrific surprise if by the end of December, or by the time we have our next meeting, that we'll have what the elections going forward will look like and who should be paid what.
We have.
Well, if at least we knew, you're right, but at least, if at least we knew what the intention of the clerk was and the commissioners were, understand, we could pass this salary ordinance, the commissioners could come in next week and abolish with an unanimous vote voters' registration. Then we're back here anyway. Or the clerk could come and say, you know what, voters' registration, please, oh, pretty please, come back and do it for us, and we'll give you unlimited overtime. I hope she didn't say that. Or they could, the election board could say, we're going to hire commissioners, and then we start rolling money over. So, but we can get the devil in the details, but at least if we knew what the general idea was, we could start piecing it. And I have the absolute amount of faith in you. You're on that committee, I know you can pull this together.
Appreciate that.
If we set a meeting, then we're not going to pass it. Set a meeting before the end of the year, if we're not going to pass it today, just a thought.
I think, I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't pass it today, and then if we got to change it, we can make a change. That way, we're protected, like Mike said, if we're not able to get it done by the end of the year.
Well, I think we're.
Karen makes a good point, we're pulling out, we're focusing on one department, and you've got all these other people.
That's right.
That, I mean.
Look, we're going to pass the salary ordinance, we've never not passed a salary ordinance.
I know.
I mean, what would it take, a 10-minute meeting in December to pass the salary ordinance?
Well, we're also, we're asking an election board, a, a new clerk-elect and county commissioners to make serious decisions here within a couple of weeks. I don't see that happening.
Then take those, then take those salaries out of the voters' registration and all vote for it.
I mean, maybe in January, they can get, it's going to take them some time. This is, this is a big rock here. We had a lot of problems, and things are being evaluated.
Yeah, the clerk-elect's not even in office till January 1st.
Right.
The good news is, it seems she's already working on it.
She's working on it. No, that's great.
Well, I don't have any doubt about that.
My concern, and I get it, and I'm with you, we need to pass the salary ordinance, and we have, and I don't care if we do it tonight or later, but the fact of the matter is, we have a little over a month to do it. It literally would take us 10 minutes to get together, four of us, and vote to pass it. We don't really know what is going on with that department, and I have concerns about paying somebody into next year for not, for a job they're not doing.
My vote is to wait.
Vicky, is there any advantage to passing it tonight versus waiting till December from a procedural or process standpoint in your office?
We do have to input the salaries into the system and into the timekeeping system, just to get it offset for 2019. We could still do that with the idea that there may be changes in this department. How many departments are we looking at? Just voter registration and probably clerks, right?
Right. It could be election board if they, could be if they want to start hiring commissioners and all that kind of stuff, could be.
Right.
They won't, I don't think.
But we will be inputting these salaries into the system. We have to. We, if you can't just press a button and it all appears, but that's the only thing I can, I think.
I think from the other perspective, is it motivates people to move forward if they know we're waiting on that, to make, to make a jump.
He's talking about you, Mike.
Well, if that's the case, why don't we, and I'm just asking, why don't we zero it out now, pass it, and then come in December? She can do her thing.
That's what I suggested, but then there's no salary, just like.
But we would have to meet in December, correct, to rectify it.
So we're going to have to meet one way or the other, if we go that direction.
So, so pull the three departments that are affected, if you want, and pass everything else.
If we don't meet, though, Mike, then none of those three.
No, we're going to have to meet, that's what we're determining, apparently.
You're just trying to squeeze another meeting out.
I don't want this to be your last meeting, Karen. I have big plans.
I'm with Dan, though, 100% that if we don't work on that, they're not going to feel the pressure to change anything drastically.
That's right.
And I think we've, we've got, we kind of hold the cards right here, we hold up on[1649.25] And I think we've got, we kind of hold the cards right here, we hold up on the page.
Larson's my wingman, don't be surprised when he agrees with me.
Well, and all due respect, I don't think we're, you know, holding any cards here. We just, you know.
We pull their salaries.
Well.
Good point, Jeff.
Mr. Green.
But.
It's not our decision what's going to happen.
No, it's not, Karen, I'm right.
This will not be finalized by December 31st.
No, it won't.
So what would, so let me ask you a question, and I honestly, this is an honest question, Mike or Karen, what would you have happen if it wasn't finalized, January 1 comes along? What would you have the people in VR getting paid? Would you have them at the salary that's in the salary ordinance, even if they're not running the election, or what would you, would you lower the salary?
Yeah, if they're not doing the election, I would lower their salary. Keep in mind that for the last, they've been receiving that pay for 2018 and we've known that they weren't going to run the election since whatever date that was, and they've been paid their full salary. So we need to make a change, obviously, and it needs to reflect whatever the current work there is that they are doing.
That's true. One of the people from the VR though was over trying to work on the election. So there was that, my understanding, at least that's my understanding. So I guess my question still, so you don't want to lower the salary now, if you're saying it can't be done by, or it won't be done by the end of the year, we don't have the answer by the end of the year, so how are we going to have something in place in this salary ordinance for January 1 then?
It might not come, Dan, till January 15th or February 15th, and there's another huge thing going on here and that's the purchase of the voting equipment.
Exactly.
We may have to meet for that.
Yeah.
That, that's huge.
So we come back.
That has to be in place for an experience.
We come back for Karen's last meeting.
Election.
Well.
Any thoughts, you guys want to do it?
I'd like to pass the salary ordinance as is and.
Roll call, who's in the second?
No.
Justin, Mike.
Oh, you recall?
Well, I would do my second for additional session. Wait a minute, you withdrew your second for additional session, that's a three dog, three.
I say let's pass it though, so we can come back and.
I make a motion to accept the 2019 salary ordinance.
Yeah, we got a first.
Second.
We got a second. Any questions or comments?
Other than things will get transferred, it's all in the general fund, whether that be election commissioners or voter registration or in the clerk's department, it's all in the general fund and they can be transferred around and retitled, so.
I have no problem meeting in December if you guys are able to solve that and we can make the changes, or they're necessary or needed. What do you think, Sal, what do you think is going to?
You know, I truthfully think that we have the power to do whatever, we can pass it or we can wait and have another meeting in December. It would be wonderful if we could get every, all of these decisions made, but I feel like, like Karen, a little bit that, you know, we need to think about the other, all the other employees and people, not have, they, however we vote on this, hopefully, they will not worry about their paycheck because we are going to pass this.
We're going to pass the salary ordinance, so we're not even looking at any other department at this time, other than that glaring white elephant in here called the election.
Yes.
So there's not going to be any concern that we don't panel, I mean, I guess.
Would, a potential suggestion to resolve this, do we, would we feel comfortable taking the voters' registration directors, is that the title, taking that salary to whatever it was before and including that as part of the ordinance on a temporary basis? And then we'll see what happens. The reality is, the clerk's not in office till January 1, the election board's not in effect till January 1.
Right.
In terms of making these decisions, nothing's going to happen prior to January 1.
Right.
So whatever that salary was, would you feel comfortable saying, let's take it, take that?
Is that in like 2016?
Do you know what their salary, what the number is on that?
Yeah, but you have to understand that we're talking about, we're talking about the salary, when we say their salaries were.
Still includes.
They were, they were still including them doing the elections. If you want to know what voters' registration person earns that just, somewhere else mistake that just registers voters, I bet it's not 50 some thousand.
I'm sure it's not.
So that's just a guess.
What was the previous salary, Vicki?
What year are we talking about though?
What do you want to do, two years ago?
2014, 15.
Let's see. I can get the old salary.
Would it even be legal to go back, I mean, can we adjust that? I mean, that seems like that's redundant.
What you.
Karen, did your motion get a second?
Yes, Mike seconded, so we've got a first, we've got a second. Any other questions are coming? Call the questions. Roll call, please, Ms. Vicki.
House Member Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
No.
Six to one.
All right, thank you guys. So next up, we have any other matter that may properly come before the council. So now, I'm certain you wanted to speak, so come on down, identify yourself and take a couple minutes.
Very interesting.
Yeah, another, wait, do we need to do that?
Well, I don't know.
I, yeah, I want us to, we need to, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we're going to have to have another meeting to deal with the salary. So maybe we can get an email out to everybody to. Do you want to, Joe, can you send out an email to the council members and pretty hard to print with the available days we have in December?
No problem.
Can you write your name, please?
Bill Perry, Portage, Indiana, he knows my address.
I do.
You know, I didn't recognize your photograph in the council room because you weren't wearing glasses.
Okay.
It's an early photo. So I was, actually, some of my coworkers, my workers are here as well, I was, I was the inspector of precinct 19, actually, everybody should have received a letter that Councilman Larson asked me to send in and it took two weeks for me to get it, because people get me the wrong email address. But I believe everybody has a copy of the letter I sent out to precinct, and then I was asked to cover precinct 31. My concerns are several. I'm glad that you have done, increased compensation for the people involved. There were some things that I have questions about and some things that I'm concerned about. One is the cover, I believe that if we are asked to cover more than one precinct, that we should be paid for more than one job. I have a judge behind me who did two, I actually had a judge who, she was my Democratic clerk and then she covered for the Democratic judge in precinct 31 when she had to leave because she timed out, she was underage, she was a minor. And so I had two people in my precinct, when I called and tried to find out if we're getting more money because we're staying open longer and everything else, and I talked to the county clerk, she basically said, no, you're not getting any more money. As a matter of fact, I've got one inspector covering five precincts. Well, I got news for you, unpaid labor is slavery and that kind of went out in 1865. So I think that, you know, you guys got to address the issue of these people did double duty and I wasn't asked to, I was contracted to do precinct eight, I can't remember now, precinct 19, 18 in my head, precinct 19, and then I was asked to do precinct 31 when I got there, actually, after I got there, I had sworn my people in and then they told me to swear the other people in, and then they told me that, oh, by the way, you're doing this other one. And I don't think it's quite fair to ask people to do double, triple or quadruple duty and then not compensate them for it. Second of all, the other aspect, and this is something that came up during the primaries when I had asked about it, because when I dropped, as I said in my letter to you, when I did the primaries, we were three and a half hours dropping our bags off after we came back to the courthouse and I asked if we're getting compensated for that and I was told no. According to the state law, we can be. As a matter of fact, it says in here that we can also be, state rules that we can be compensated for more than one position, if you do more than one job. So, you know, these are issues that according to the state, yeah, I can get more money out of this stuff if you people vote for it, and I think it's only fair. I just, you know, I was, I appreciate the fact, I think, like Justin, I talked to you the night of when we were dropping our bags off and of course, I talked to Councilman Larson and I understand you were there, I didn't see you.
Oh, I was there. I didn't see you.
Yourself a long night. Oh, just for you?
Yeah.
20 hours for me, plus the two hours at home. And it was told, and they said, I think it was, Councilman Jessup said to me, says, this is, Jeff says it's my fault, Councilman Jessup said it's not any individual's fault, it's a, it's a perfect storm of people not talking. My research is pretty much, and I haven't done deep, but I just did some research and it seems that it all came down to the county clerk, because my research found that she had actually been given, offered money by the Board of Elections to hire temporaries at a 15 bucks an hour to help pack bags, and she turned it down because she said she had everything under control. When I went and picked up my bag Sunday night before the election at 11:30 at night, I was talking to the workers there and they said they had been doing this, they'd been on overdrive for a month, working between 3:00 and 5:00 in the morning trying to play catch-up because the county clerk said she had it under control, but she didn't seem to find it important enough to come and actually work with her workers to help rectify the situation she has caused. So and honestly, I wish you could just take her money away from her because she obviously wasn't doing her job. It's not an issue of, and I've, as I've talked to my workers and other people, I said, this is not an issue of Democrat or Republican, it's an issue of somebody who forgot that the definition of an elected official is a public servant and you serve the people that you work, that you are hired, that you are elected by. And if you think that you're, if you think you're a, you know, a king or, you know, some sort of lord and you've forgotten what you're supposed to be and you need to leave office, period. So in respect to that, I just, you know, I appreciate you doing this, my, as I said in my letter, I think the biggest thing you need to do is you need to apologize, you need to rectify the situations, because passing the increase, the, you know, passing pay increase is really a bandage over a bullet hole, because I, everybody I talked to said, I'm never doing this again. And I honestly wasn't planning to do this again after the, after my experience with the primaries, but they begged me to come back and do this because they're shorthanded. And because I love to help people out where I need and I'm stupid, I actually did that. But it really needs to be an issue of apologies to people and then I, I know you're talking about increase, I really think you need to increase it to a minimum of 400 bucks a person, because we are, we are liable, if this, if there's something wrong with the ballots, we go to jail. And to pay us less than a guy that's working down at, you know, at one of the, at one of the stores over the holiday is pretty pathetic, because they're not going to go to jail unless they steal something. And then probably not even then, they get a hand slip and get kicked out the door, you know. So I don't know what more I can say, I've pretty much said it all in my letter and I just wanted to reiterate, I need, you know, I want to see my guys get paid what they're working for and of course, I ain't falling to that because I did two jobs, but when you got people doing multiple jobs, I need to get the multiple pay out of it.
Well, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have anything? Any other council members?
Vicki, does anyone?
You're good? Motion to adjourn, please.
No.
Hold on.
Nope.
Hold on, hold on.
We're coming back in December if you're thinking about something.
Yeah.
December, for sure, right?
We are coming back in December, right, Karen?
What if it's not?
I don't know, Dan, are we?
I think we are. I think we should come back in December. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn. You can be back for December, right?
Are we going to invite the new clerk and will she have a chance to look for new election equipment?
Yes.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yes.
Because we need to move on.
Always. I've all heard the new. Awesome.
We should set that up, that committee.
We got a committee now. See, there you go, run the equipment.
Equipment's a nice work.
I thought it, I worked that.
Thanks, Bill.
I was down in that hallway too with the bag, waiting to turn in, I worked that day and I was.
That part of the equipment didn't work, but that was going to be.
I, and I agree with you, I thought they did too, they did their job, yes, was there some problems? Yes, there was, but there, there is yearly, but it is time that we do need to get new equipment and there was nothing, I didn't feel bad at all, I feel like that we had a very, that the election equipment did their job, but we do need new equipment.